Well, I'm going to call to order the Monday, September 28, 2020 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting to Order. We're going to begin with a roll call. And Mayor Mike Fournier is here tonight. Commissioner Douglas?
Here.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Here.
Newbuck?
Here.
Commissioner Macy? Commissioner Macy?
Here.
There you go. And I see Commissioner Perush has made it. Oh, there she is. Commissioner Bruce?
I'm here. I apologize. Zoom wanted to update my whole system before they would let me in.
No worries. I thought I was going to be the one. I turned on my machine and it was not cooperating at all. But it's amazing when you let it run, walk away, turn it on and off a few times, it miraculously works. All right. So we've gone through the roll call and there's been a request to go to closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged information and pending litigation. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Perush, a second by Commissioner Douglas. We'll do a roll call vote on this. Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yes.
Commissioner Newbuck?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So we will enter closed session. Ms. Schwanger, we'll wait for your word when we venture closed session. Thank you.
Mayor Fournier? WROK has called and we're live again.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Schwanger. All right, we're going to resume our September 28, 2020 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting. We were in closed session. We've come out now. Thank you for everyone's patience. We're going to do a quick roll call to kick everything off for this part of the meeting again. Mayor Mike Fournier is present. Commissioner Douglas?
Present.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Here.
Commissioner Newbuck?
Here.
Commissioner Macy?
Here.
Commissioner Perush?
Here.
Okay. So the next item on our agenda is the invocation given by Commissioner LaVassar, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner LaVassar?
As a tumultuous 2020 inches toward its end, with too often reports of expressions of rage crescendoing in the news, let us keep in mind that we are all brothers and sisters, that we have as a common bond, loving our families, that the vast majority of us wish for peace and tranquility in our communities, that we can have differences of opinion without hating or dehumanizing one another. I appreciated the relationship enjoyed between the late justices Antonin Scalia and Ruth Bader Ginsburg, who despite their diametrically different opinions in interpreting the Constitution, valued one another's friendship. Let's enjoy our fellow citizens despite our different views. And when we do advocate for policies we believe to be right, let's do so as Justice Ginsburg advocated. Fight for the things that you care about, but do it in a way that will lead others to join you. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number seven tonight is the presentation of the Mind Over Matter, the MOM 2020 Virtual Race Fundraising Results. I see Julie Farhat's online tonight. Thank you so much for taking time out of your schedule to be with us here tonight and giving us a very important update on some of the great work that you and your organization have done for many years, especially in 2020, when you faced challenges with this great initiative. Ms. Farhat?
Hi there. For those who don't know me, my name is Julie Farhat and I'm a lifelong Royal Oak resident. I started the local nonprofit organization Mind Over Matter, lovingly referred to as MOM after losing my mother's schizophrenia and suicide in 2000, 2000, 2005. I wanted to turn my pain into purpose. And so in 2006, my siblings and I started the MOM 5K Run Walk for Mental Health Awareness and Suicide Prevention in our hometown of Royal Oak. And the 5K Run Walk is always the first Saturday in May and starts and ends at Star JC Park where my family lived for 20 years. The event brings families, friends, survivors, mental health advocates, and weekend warriors together for a feel-good event to broach the often unspoken topics of mental illness and suicide. I wanted to do something special for the 15th anniversary MOM race and then COVID hit and we were all sequestered to our homes. I contemplated canceling the event, but I just couldn't bear the thought of turning my back on all of families that are drawn to our event for personal reasons. Grief certainly doesn't stop during a pandemic, nor do mental health struggles or suicide. So I restructured the MOM race as a virtual event, a your-way, any-day 5K that could be completed anytime during the month of May for mental health awareness month at your convenience. And I just encourage people to get outside and exercise for their physical and mental health. I reduced registration rates to make the event as affordable as possible for people that had lost their jobs during COVID. And I ran into some challenges. It was a lot of work to find someone to produce t-shirts during a global pandemic and also a little more work than I expected to package and ship 75 dozen t-shirts while caring for four young children. There were moments when I wanted to quit, but I remembered that I was a survivor and I dug deep and I found my strength and I focused on what I could do. And so in the end, we ended up having 977 registrants for the virtual MOM race during the peak of the COVID pandemic. And we also had the financial support of more than 30 businesses and 50 personal donors. And so I'm pleased to announce that the virtual MOM race raised another $35,000 for local brain research, suicide prevention programming, and crisis intervention services, bringing our fundraising grand total to $435,000. I think they're on the line. I believe our charities are on the line to say a few words about how the 2020 MOM race funds will be used. The University of Michigan Depression Center, No Resolve and Common Ground. But first, I just wanted to thank the city of Royal Oak for your ongoing support and for allowing me to continue this wonderful tradition in the city that I live and love. And I encourage everyone to take this opportunity to learn the warning signs and risk factors of suicide. September is Suicide Awareness Month. We have some resources on the MOM website at momrace.org. And I'm just encouraging people to dig deep and be bold and be brave enough to start a conversation about suicide in your families, in your household. You never know who might be in need of a lifeline. So without further ado, is Steve from the University of Michigan Depression Center on the line? I know I shared the Zoom link. I don't know if it was shareable.
I am here.
Oh, great. Go ahead, Steve.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Julie. And thank you once again for, obviously, there was no race this year. It was something that we all missed, but I do want to extend my profound thanks to you and to the commissioners and to the citizens of Royal Oak for, really, it's been, this is the 14th year now of the MOM race. And it's been a tradition that is treasured to me because it's been, I think, a wonderful event in terms of raising awareness about mental illness. Something that is, it's really, it's been a change, I think. I think over the 14 years, I think we've seen more recognition about mental illness and that it exists and that it can affect any one of us. And also, most importantly, that it can be treated. And there are many things that we can do in the way of treating and making the lives of people who do suffer from mental illness better. So the MOM race, I think, has been actually a part of that. And I'm really very humbled and grateful to participate. I'm grateful for the generosity of all the donors this year, for the people who couldn't be at the race that we didn't have. But of course, there's next year and I look forward to this tradition continuing. At the University of Michigan Depression Center, we are committed to both providing treatment for mental illness, also in finding, in training and educating people, raising awareness about mental illness, and researching the causes of mental illness and finding better ways to treat it. Specifically, the research that I'm engaged in and that the MOM race proceeds will go to benefit are involved in understanding and identifying people who are in the early stages of a psychotic disorder can give very disruptive, very upsetting illness for families. But there are a lot of treatments, interventions, and things that work actually very well. But sometimes it's just a matter of getting them to the families and getting them to, getting the access and being able to let them know that there are these things that can be done. So we are, of course, engaged in research to try to find better treatments, to improve what we have. And as I said, that's where the funds from the MOM race will go to. So once again, thanks to Julie, thanks to all the participants of the MOM race who weren't able to actually get out and do this wonderful race through the lovely neighborhoods of Royal Oak. But as I said, next year, you know, we'll be there and hopefully in person. So again, thank you, Julie, and thank you, everyone, for donating and making the MOM race possible.
I also believe that Dennis Leggio from No Resolve is on the call. Dennis, are you here?
I'm here. Hi, Julie. Hi, everyone. I'd like to say thanks again for persevering through the COVID madness and hosting a virtual, very successful virtual MOM race this year and certainly the first, hopefully the last, right? You've done a phenomenal job as you always do. I appreciate your friendship and your support of everything that we're doing over here at No Resolve in the Shed. Like everyone else, we've had to think about how we are going to change our way of doing things. And with the funds that you raised through the race this year, part of that is going to develop some virtual programming that we can offer to not only the schools in McComb and Oakland County, but beyond that, in lieu of being able to do in-school assemblies and presentations. So we're excited to have some of those programs and resources coming out over the next couple of months. We've also been working with our Youth Advisory Council here at the Shed to develop some additional programming in the space of brain health and the arts. We'll be launching and hosting an online art competition called The Detour Project. So excited to announce that when the launch happens mid to late October. And outside of that, we're looking forward to opening the doors to the Shed once again, when it's safe to do so, and continuing to work with the kids that rely on this space because I think that everybody can imagine the same scenario right now. Promoting mental health and practicing mental health is more important than ever. And what we do is possible, Julie, because of you and your kindness and support over the years. And it's just an honor and I'm incredibly grateful. And thank you so much for persevering this year. It really, it's a tight one for us and your support will help make sure we get through this. Thank you.
You're welcome, Dennis. And I know Jeff was trying to get back in on the call. Jeff Kapacinski from Common Ground at Last Charity, are you on the line? If not, no worries. I don't want to postpone the meeting. I can always present some updates through our Facebook page. So thank you again to the city of Royal Oak for allowing me to present these funds to our charitable organizations. And I hope we can be back in some sort of more normal setting here in 2021.
Well, you know what? Dennis and Stephen, thank you very much for, you know, sharing your thoughts. And thank you for all the important work that you do for public health in this community. And Julie, I mean, you've always been an inspiration and amazing, at least to this commission, this city, as far as what you've been able to do. We're all very inspired by you and this year even more so. I mean, given the challenges that you faced, you figured out a way. You taught us that perseverance can matter when you have a vision and a goal and something important to go after. And we're very grateful for everything you do in this community and especially with the MOM race and the funding that you raise on such an important issue facing all of us here, especially in Royal Oak. Thank you so much for all your effort.
You're very welcome.
And there's a lot of claps going on. There's virtual claps.
I'll accept virtual collapse anytime. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Okay. This brings us to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is the Oakland County November Park Village Ballot Initiative. I see Commissioner Woodward here. I imagine, is he going to be the one to present this evening? Chairman Woodward? No?
I'm here to support the whole team. So I think they're all here, too.
I see him as well. I see Melissa. All right.
Yep. I think Dan Stensel, our executive officer, might be in the waiting room. I see his phone number down there. There we go.
Is that Dan? Confirm Dan?
Yeah, I was trying to confirm his number, but I didn't get a text back. So I apologize.
You're on mute, Dan, if you can hear us. There we go. Are you there, Dan?
Yes, I am. Good evening.
Welcome, Mr. Stensel. How are you?
Hey, fantastic. Hey, good evening to all the council members and the city staff and city residents. I'm Dan Stensel, the Executive Officer of Oakland County Parks and Recreation Commission. And this is our 54th year of being in operation, providing recreation services, programs, and facilities to the residents of Oakland County. On behalf of the commission and its staff, I thank you for the opportunity to provide this brief presentation on the commission's proposal to increase its current operating mileage from .2310 to .35. And also to provide an update on our park partnership with the city of Royal Oak, where we're repurposing Normandy Oaks into a new facility. I also have supporting this presentation Oakland County Board of Commissioners members representing Royal Oak. And that's our chairman, Dave Woodward, and Gary McGilvery, who also serves as our chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission. At this time, I'd like to turn over the formal presentation to Sue Wells, our manager of Parks and Recreation Operations and a Royal Oak resident on 5th Street, and Melissa Prowse, our supervisor of planning and resource development, the resident of Clausen. Sue, Melissa, take it away.
Good evening.
First, real quick, Sue, I just want to make sure. Can everyone see the presentation?
Sure can.
Okay, great. Thanks. Go ahead.
Good evening. Real briefly, wanted to go over a brief presentation about our millage. I know you have a busy agenda. We are very blessed in Oakland County with the natural and recreational resources we have. We have over 1,400 lakes, five major river systems, 90,000 acres of public land, as well as four major parks and recreation businesses here in Clinton, the State Park, Oakland County, and our local municipalities. Within Oakland County parks, we have 14 parks. We have nearly 7,000 acres. We hit the high-water mark at 2 million visitors a year. Nearly 80 miles of trails. We have five golf courses, three dog parks, two water parks, our nature centers, our farmer's market, and our two campgrounds. I'd just like to stress how important these facilities were during the pandemic. Our campgrounds and our golf courses have exploded with business. We are full at our campgrounds all the way through October, as well as our trails are being used on a daily basis with new residents that have never been to an Oakland County park. Through our recreational outreach, we see about 1.9 million people and we're proud to work with the city of Royal Oak with this program. We have nearly 75 full-time staff, as well as 1,000 volunteers. We're proud of the accomplishments that we've made in the last 10 years. We entered into agreement with the city of Madison Heights for the operation of the Red Oaks Nature Center and Park. We took over our food and beverage operations. We've put in major improvements to Catalpa Oaks with the irrigation, pavilion, restrooms, and trail that goes entirely around the park. We have purchased Independence Oaks North, which is almost 200 acres. We have a busy Red Oaks Dog Park and Trail in Madison Heights. We've acquired land at White Lake Oaks in White Lake Township. We're very proud and excited about our partnership that we do have with the city of Royal Oak on the Normandy Project. Two weeks ago, we were able to open our ORV park, which is in Holly, and it has been a very busy and exciting facility. One last initiative that we have done is we have increased our mobile recreation programming and our programming to seniors, adaptive, and special events throughout the county. And I would like to stress how valuable the staff for the city have been to assist us with that programming. When we were established, we had one park, almost 200 acres, and our millage was .25. Currently, we have 14 parks, nearly 7,000 acres, and we operate on a millage rate of .2310. But just briefly, to paint the financial picture that we are at, we have over $20 million in deferred maintenance projects. Through surveys we've taken, one of the things that the residents like is that we have well-maintained facilities. Our facilities are getting to the point where they need attention. And because of this, we also have a shrinking capital budget. Our net position has decreased over the last three years because of the unplanned repairs and emergencies that we've had to take place. And you know, like a homeowner, if you can't buy something new or build something new, it's just ongoing increased maintenance. And another component is the headly rollback has affected the amount of millage dollars we receive.
So I'm going to take it over from here. Thanks, Sue. We wanted to show the commission the results from our 2017 Countywide Recreational Needs Assessment. We do this every five years in conjunction with our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And Sue just mentioned, you know, these are the top 10 things that people were most willing to fund with that tax funding. And it is fixing up and repairing, you know, what we already have and maintaining a high-quality park system, followed closely by new trails and boardwalks and land purchase for new trails, which, you know, trails are always at the top of everybody's recreational priority list. But again, you know, facilities more accessible, new playgrounds, things like that. So back to this to our November 4, 2020 ballot question. Just go ahead and read this real quick, just because I think it's important to hear what that is. So it says, "The Oakland County Park System includes 7,000 acres and 80 miles of trails, preserving and protecting the environment. There are 13 Oakland County Parks and Recreational activities throughout the county, including campgrounds, dog parks, golf courses, water parks, and mobile recreation units. To continue to provide revenue to the Oakland County Parks and Recreation Commission, shall the current millage, which has been reduced by the required rollback, be replaced and increased to .35 mils for 10 years from 2020 to 2029? The .35 mils is equal to 35 cents per $1,000 of taxable value. The purpose of the millage is to improve, operate, and maintain parks, open spaces, and water areas, trails, and recreation facilities, to allow for free day-use park admission for seniors 62 and over, military veterans, and residents with permanent disabilities, to expand trails, to enhance local recreation programs, and to increase environmental conservation and recreation activities. Revenue from the millage will be dispersed only to the county of Oakland to be used solely for the purpose of funding the Oakland County Parks and Recreation Commission." So we wanted to just give you a little bit more detail about what some of those things mean because some of that is new. But just overall, you know, our goals are to continue to protect our precious natural resources and the environment, to provide outreach and programming and year-round activities throughout the county, not just within our parks, but you heard about those mobile recreation programs that we have as well, to reinvest, as we mentioned, into our current parks and facilities to make them safer and cleaner and more attractive to our park users, and to increase access county-wide. And the ways that we want to do that are to offer free annual vehicle passes for seniors 62 and up, for our veterans and active military and their dependents, and for persons with permanent disabilities. So these populations have received a discount in the past, but we want to provide them free access to their county parks. We also plan to establish a grant program for funding of trails throughout the county, as well as a grant program for local park improvements. And that could be anything from new playgrounds to trails within parks to restroom facilities and lots in between. So we want to kind of share the love a little bit with our local communities and provide some assistance, hopefully potential match funding for some state and federal grants. We plan to increase our programmatic outreach. That RAP program that we have is going to get bigger and better. And then last but not least, we'll have dedicated funding for invasive species management county-wide. So just to kind of paint a picture of what that .35 looks like for a home with a market value of $200,000, which is a taxable value of $100,000, that homeowner would pay approximately $35 a year to support the Oakland County parks. And with that, we'll open it up to questions. And then we ask everyone to please vote on November 3rd.
I have a quick question. I mean, that last slide that you showed, I mean, that's, is that the, it's the increase of .35 or that's what the new rate would be?
That's what the new rate would be.
Okay. So it wouldn't be an increase of $35 per household. It'd be the difference of
25.
To get all these benefits that you cited, like .5, which would be far less than $35 a year.
Yep, exactly. I think we said for a home of this value was an increase of approximately $12 a year from what they're paying now.
And that's also for businesses?
Yes, all taxpayers.
Thank you.
I mean, if I can just jump in, Mr. Mayor, I mean, as, on behalf of my colleague Gary McGilvery, a colleague on the board, who's the chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, I really want to applaud the staff that really went to work, not just to identify what it was going to take to make certain that over the next decade, that we fix all the things that need fixing, but make certain that we deliver on and make those investments into our park system for all residents to enjoy today and preserve for future generations. We have great parks. I think we've demonstrated and Royal Oak really charted the way on how Parks and Recreation can work with local communities and build the model to further partnerships, to expand recreation opportunities. And probably nothing could be more highlighted, the need for outdoor green spaces for people to go during this pandemic, to enjoy with their families and really enjoy the assets that had belonged to all of us. And so the staff really went to work, made this happen. And the Parks and Recreation Commission unanimously, in a bipartisan way, recommended this millage. And voters will have an opportunity to make a decision to whether to support it in November. So.
And I'll just echo that.
Thank you, Dave.
Chairman Woodward, you know, I think, great presentation. I applaud the Oakland County Parks Team here putting together something that makes sense for us to understand as folks that stand outside, you know, the day-to-day activities. I'll also just underscore the fact that I think even here in Royal Oak, and I'm sure you're seeing it in Oakland County with COVID-19, I think people are finding and using our parks much more and having much more appreciation and the demand for, you know, recreation activities and infrastructure and repairs and all of these things, I think, is going to be increasing. And I think that's okay because, you know, if it's what people want, that's where we should be investing. And so I really applaud your foresight on this and getting ahead of the curve. Because I think, even though this COVID thing will be temporary, I think the long-lasting impressions of park usage will last for decades in preparing for it, in preparing for that new demand curve stimulated by this, you know, COVID And preparing for it, and preparing for that new demand curve stimulated by this, this, you know, COVID-19, I think will be, you know, you guys are, seem to have a very good plan in place. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, I'm trying to see my, I have a control panel here, so you have to bear with me while I push a lot of buttons and see if we have any questions from commissioners. Okay, all right. I can see everyone now. Any questions for the fine folks of Oakland County Parks and Recreation? Any comments? Okay, that's a good sign. Good sign.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. You guys have anything, Mr. Stensel, Mr. Woodward, Ms. Proust as well, anything to conclude with?
Thank you for, thank you for the partnership we've had with the Norman D. Oaks Project, and we look forward to some sort of a celebration towards the end of October.
We're looking forward to it, Mr. Stensel. Great project, great cooperation, and I think a testament of what we can achieve when we put our minds together. So thank you for all your efforts there.
Right. And I would say that for any residents that are watching at home, if you want more information, you can go to the Oakland County Parks and Rec website. Melissa, can you direct them to the exact spot?
Yep, it's actually oaklandcountyparks.com/millage2020.
And all the information of how these dollars will be used over the next 10 years is there?
Well, thank you. Appreciate you guys making time tonight to come and make us aware of all the good work you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. All right, this brings us to item nine on tonight's agenda, which is public comment. Has been the case since the pandemic began. We accept calls in ahead of time, and Ms. Schwanger.
Mayor Fongay, members of the City Commission, this evening we had three calls, and I will play those for you right now.
Thank you, Ms. Schwanger.
This is Rick Kowalski. I'm calling about the review of candidates for these City Commission vacancy. Couple of things. I certainly hope that you folks are going to do some background checks and verifications of all the claims that are made by the applicants. Particularly, I wouldn't, wouldn't want to have a so-called program manager who has at least one bankruptcy and numerous judgments against him for not being able to keep finances in order, spending taxpayer money, because he's friend of, he's a friend of the management. Secondly, there was some question about Pam not being worthy because she's running for a county commission seat. Well, I think all of the majority of you, if not all of you, voted to allow a sitting city commissioner to run for mayor without reviving their seat. So I don't see why that should be any kind of about, any kind of a worry about putting Pam on the city commission, or it shouldn't, certainly should not be any kind of criteria, since obviously it's not a problem if a sitting commissioner is putting time in to run for mayor while they're doing their job. Thank you.
Hello, I am a Royal Oak resident calling in in regards to the open seat for City Commission. I am asking that the proper protocol is followed. The next person in line for the seat was Pam Lindell, and I'm hoping that the city commissioners and the mayor make the right decision to follow the protocol for this position. There is a proper process that needs to be followed, and it is not the questionnaire and application that is required right now. We're requested for that position, so please follow the proper protocol. And we hope that you make the right decision, get city commissioners, so your integrity is looked up upon. Thank you so much. Bye.
Hello, my name is John Galecza. If you want to hold on to your mantra that the voters elected you to make the hard decisions, then you must allow Pam Lindell or Tom Hallett to replace Kim Gibbs as commissioner, or you're just double talking. On a positive note, I will say you are consistent in not letting voters actually decide on big topics and transparent. You made it crystal clear with the plan you set forth last week. You will quickly appoint a political ally and ignore the residents who just voted 10 months ago. You purposely set the application process to be quick, and charlatan announced your criteria, someone who shares your vision for the city. You want whoever stands for yourselves and not a representation of community view. The CEO of Philly belonged to Kim Gibbs, someone chosen by the voters that you fought against, politically persecuted, and censured. Howdy Buck noted last week that the commission has in the past voted from the candidate pool of a prior election to fill an empty position, and called that a reasonable process. He said he wants someone role-wise that can hit the ground running. Sounds like he's asking for Tom Hallett. Pat Perusch talked dismissively and negatively about the person who actually won the next largest vote of all, Pam Lindell, saying that the voters rejected Pam, but they showed they did not want Pam because she came in fourth of six candidates. The election results show that your slate of Perusch, DeBrock, and Morales, with 18,872 votes collectively, won just 51.9% of the city council votes, with 17,410 collective votes, or 48%, going for the Levasser, Lindell, and Hallett ticket. You want to say Pam or Tom come from a weak position, really? Pam and Tom both did impressively well, considering it outspent them by a factor of 10. Pam and Tom each invested time and their own treasure over the period of many months to represent residents of Royal Oak County Council, with both of them walking the entire city, meeting and getting to the residents, and asking them what their vision is. 48% of the votes decisively did not pick your vision. Well, to have a more balanced city council to reflect those 48% of votes, don't you think? Or maybe residents' views never really matter and are just part of the charade you put on, to say you gathered input and then do whatever you want. Again, if you want to hold on to your mantra that the voters elected you to make the hard decisions, then you must logically allow Pam Lindell or Tom Hallett to replace Kim Gibbs. Do you think it's right to retain the balance of city viewpoints on the council that you had when Kim was alive? Residents sure do. Thank you.
Mayor Fongay, members of the City Commission, that concludes the public comment this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Schwanger. This brings us to item 10, which is the approval of the agenda. There was a request to add authorization to proceed with the discussion that took place in closed session related to a complaint. Maybe whoever moves with the agenda, they can move with that. And I'd also like to add, and I don't think I need to add it, because we can talk about it on item 13, but I have a item that I think is germane to item 13 that I'll be bringing up to the commission today. So just a forewarning. Commissioner Macy?
Okay, I think I was going to try to add the thing that I think you're thinking about. So I'll move approval of the agenda with the addition of the item that was discussed at closed session for the approval at the end. And I, I think, are you talking about Mr. Pernix? Is that what you're talking about? Picking a charity? No?
No, I was more referring to, you know, about having a court outside City Hall during election.
Oh, okay. Well, then I'd like to add an additional item as well to a discussion of the charity we should select for Mr. Pernix, Get Out the Vote Challenge for the local cities.
Second by Commissioner Perusch. All right. Any discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'd just like Mr. Gillum to confirm that, that we've got his issues covered.
Yes, Commissioner, thank you. Yeah, I can provide more detail when we get to that agenda item.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. I'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Levasser?
Yes.
Macy?
Yes.
Perusch?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, we have an agenda established. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda for further discussion? I'm not seeing anything. The consent agenda consists of approval of appointments for committee rotation, claims September 22nd and 25th, approval of purchase orders, approval of declaration and disposal of surplus property, approval of 2021 winter maintenance agreement with the Road Commission for Oakland County, approval of amendment to extend the Woodward Dream Cruise License Agreement with General Motors LLC, proclamation designated October 7, 2020 as Energy Efficiency Day, Human Resource Department requests for latency, approval of Oakland County Local Road Improvement Matching Plan Pilot Program Cost Participation Agreement, approval of the 2021 Michigan Department of Transportation Annual Permit, approval of ordinance establishing Environmental Advisory Board second reading, approval of First Amendment to option in land lease agreement, new singular wireless fire station number three, receiving filed the non-action items, which includes one item tonight, which is notice of Vern Community Energy Management Grant. Is there a motion for the consent agenda red? Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Macy, discussion on the consent agenda. All right, with no call for the vote, Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
Mr. Perusch?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Levasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, the consent agenda is approved. This brings us to item 12, approval of recreational marijuana licensing ordinance amendments first reading. Mr. Gillon?
Mayor and Commissioners, this is a recommendation that you approve, proposed amendments to the recreational marijuana licensing ordinance on first reading. As we've been developing the application for the city's website for recreational marijuana licensing, there are a couple issues that we've become aware of relative to the ordinance as it was approved in late July. The first has to do with the requirement that an applicant for a license submit preapproval for the license from the state of Michigan. We're still feeling, it's still, it's still of the state of mind that a preapproval is required, but the way the ordinance is written, it would specifically be preapproval for a recreational marijuana license that would be required in order to be able to submit an application. And the information that we have now from outside counsel at Dickinson Wright and from other sources is also, is that the state right now is prioritizing the processing of applications for recreational marijuana licenses for applicants who already have a medical marijuana facility license. In other words, for the time being, the only individuals that are, the only entities that are able to get prequalification for a recreational marijuana license are the entities that currently hold a medical marijuana facility license. There will come a time in the future when rec facility applicants can also be prequalified just for a rec license. But as it stands now, it's only the holders of the medical marijuana facility licenses that are being prequalified. So this would, in our minds, seem to reduce or shrink the pool of applicants for recreational marijuana facilities licenses that the, the city is going to be seeing once the window is open and we start processing applicants. And I think that's totally contrary to what the consensus of the commission was. I believe it was the commission's consensus to attract as broad of a pool of applicants for rec licenses as possible. So we would recommend an amendment to the ordinance that would expand the prequalification requirement. So not only could you present prequalification for a recreational marijuana facility license, but you could also present pre- prequalification for a medical marijuana facility license as well. So what that would be doing is we would be opening up the door for people that have been prequalified for a medical marijuana facility license but have not actually obtained the license, along with people who do have the prequalification.
Did we lose Mr. Gillum, or is he really?
Really, a little bit of housekeeping. I'm sorry?
Miss, you froze there for a minute, at least I might think, about 12 seconds. So if you could back up 12 seconds?
Okay.
We thought you were really deep in thought like this. We're like, wow, he's really thinking about this point, but then we realized you were frozen.
Offline, I'll tell, I'll be, I'll be a joke about that another time, but anyway. So the, the purpose of, of the amendment to, to section 435, 4A of the ordinance would be to expand the pool of licensed applicants to include not only entities that have obtained prequalification for a rec license, which would be people that already have a medical marijuana facility license, but also to include potential applicants who have been prequalified for a medical marijuana facility license, but do not actually hold the medical marijuana facility license. So that's the first part. The second part would be really, in my mind, more housekeeping than anything else in terms of the criteria that the city manager is to use in ranking competing applications for the available license slots. The current ordinance makes reference to performed and planned future outreach, and this would seem to encourage potential applicants to do outreach in the neighborhood where they are hoping to be able to go before they're actually slotted for a license by the city manager. And we feel that that would be counterproductive. So our recommendation is that the part of the ordinance regarding the criteria for the competitive process be amended to remove the reference to perform future outreach, only to deal instead with planned future outreach. If you have any questions about either of the changes, I'd be happy to try to answer those. But again, we would recommend approval of the proposed ordinance on first reading.
Any questions for Mr. Gillum? Commissioner Dubach?
Thank you, Mayor. So Mr. Gillum, just to clarify, the changes in eligibility, they expand the pool so that we're not only looking at those who are already in the industry, because that's what we're trying to avoid, is you businesses in the state that own everything. But still allow us control and make sure that we have quality operators. Is that right?
That's correct. We're, we're still relying upon the state process to do the initial vetting of applicants. But we would also, we would be allowing entities that have obtained prequalification for a medical marijuana facility license, but don't actually hold the license yet, to apply for a rec license here in Royal Oak. As it stands right now, the only ones who can apply for a rec license are those who are prequalified for a rec license. And again, as we have been, we have found out, the only ones who can get prequalified for a rec license are actually in the industry. They already hold a medical marijuana facility license.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that change forward, because I think we made clear from the outset of this process that we don't want to be a part of allowing a small group of those already at the table to dominate the industry across the state. So it seems like a reasonable change to me.
Mr. Perusch?
Mr. Gillum, looking at the language of the amendment, it says that in section three, subsection A, preapproval for a marijuana establishment license or a medical marijuana facility license by the state of Michigan. That would be the new language. But yet, in your description of it in your memo, you talk about prequalification. Are you happy with the, with the wording where it says preapproval for a marijuana establishment license or a medical marijuana facility license? It seems to me that if there is a, there is a prequalification process, and that's actually incorporated in the statute, the wording perhaps should be prequalification as opposed to preapproval? Or really, should it be preapproval given the way the state statute is, is written?
Let's see.
I guess the essence of the question is there a difference between the pre, a preapproval process and a prequalification process?
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a real good catch on your part. I think the prequalification, I think, is a term of art, the way it's set up. So yeah, I believe that the appropriate language in, let's see if I can find it now.
Commissioner.
Section three, three A of the proposed amendment would be prequalification for a marijuana establishment license or a medical marijuana facility license by the state of Michigan.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt. Commissioner Prush, I'm going to ask if you could take over the meeting for just.
Sure. Let me make sure I can see everybody. Okay, so that was my only question, Mr. Gillum. So in terms of the language that would be approving tonight, it would be pre- prequalification for a medical, for a marijuana establishment license, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, instead of preapproval?
Correct.
Okay.
Again, yeah, I appreciate you catching that.
That was the only question I had. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Gillum? Commissioner Dubak?
Thank you, Mayor Protan. And just to reiterate on the other change, Mr. Gillum, we are not, I mean, we're still demanding that they have a plan in place for community outreach, community engagement in order to be considered for a license. They'll have to execute on that, should they be awarded. What we don't want is for, if we have a hundred applicants, every one of them has to go banging on doors in our neighborhoods and our business corridors, is that right?
That's correct. The, the, the plan for outreach by an applicant is still something that the manager would be taking into consideration in slotting applicants for their licenses when the window is open, but it would not be suggesting or requiring that applicants start their outreach before they're actually slotted for a license. That's correct.
I think we're eliminating a potential serious nuisance to our residents by, by making that change. Okay, well, I'll, I'll move for the amendments.
Motion by Commissioner Dubak, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. All right, discussion.
I'm sorry, did you call me, Mayor?
Yes, I did. Sorry, Commissioner.
Thank you. Outreach comes in many different forms. It doesn't necessarily mean banging on doors. I think there's potential value in applicants during the process seeking out some feedback from the, from the area, just to, to know what concerns people have, and so they can potentially address those on the front end. So, so I don't know that, that I would recommend removing that word performed from the ordinance. I, I think there could be some value there.
Commissioner Douglas.
We're not precluding applicants from talking with citizens or neighboring business owners, and probably the smart ones will do that as a matter of course, but we don't want to dictate that they do that. At the risk of what Commissioner Dubak described, we have a hundred applicants and they're knocking on doors in a hundred neighborhoods. So I don't, I don't think the language we've approved here precludes anybody using community outreach to support their case.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yeah, I agree. I totally appreciate where Commissioner LaVassar is coming from, and I think we still expect applicants to do their due diligence, but I just don't think we should create a, a demand that they're issuing phone surveys and hosting town halls, and if, if there's a hundred applicants, it's going to feel like there's a hundred different people talking about opening up shops when only one is actually going to get a license in a given area. So that feels like a nuisance to our residents to make a hundred hopefuls constantly reach out to them. But I, I agree, they should do their due diligence in whatever effective way they can. I also think that kind of engagement becomes less effective if you have all these entities doing it at the same time, and it doesn't really help the process.
I think especially since, you know, the limitations of where these can be located, you know, it will be, you know, common for, you know, people to get multiple inquiries, because I'm sure certain properties, you know, only certain ones will be up for sale and lease, and, you know, everyone will seek out an application and, and, you know, will be a nuisance. But I do, I do think that as people make their way through, I think the way we've written it, when there's a serious contender, then that serious contender has to, you know, make sure they have a plan in place for outreach. Okay, any other discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Mr. Dubak?
Yes.
Mr. LaVassar?
No.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, motion passes. This brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is November third, twenty twenty election update. Mr. Bray? Or is it Ms. Howes going to take it?
I could speak to that if, if she is not available, so.
Ms. Howes here.
Oh, if she's available, then I will defer to her to give you that update.
Hi, Ms. Howes. I just wanted to give an update regarding our ballots and everything going on right now with the election. As of today, we've mailed twenty-one thousand two hundred and three ballots. Just to give you a little perspective on that, in twenty sixteen, we mailed a total of nine thousand twenty-four ballots for the whole election. So we still have quite a bit to go to November third. Ballots, as I said, they were mailed out today, so voters should be receiving them this week. They can go to romy.gov/ivote to check the status of their ballot. That includes when the ballot was mailed, as well as when I receive it back in my office, when we scan it, they can go to the website and make sure that we've received it. We're open to the public now, we opened on Thursday, so going forward, Mondays through Thursdays, we're going to be open nine to three, and on Fridays, we're going to be open nine to eleven. Additional hours for the last two weeks of October, we also have scheduled those, we're going to be open Tuesdays and Thursdays, October twenty twentieth, twenty-second, twenty-seventh, and twenty-ninth, from four thirty to seven thirty, and also the last two Saturdays in October, we're going to be open from eight AM to one PM, and on October thirty-first, we're going to be open seven AM to three PM. Drop boxes are located in the front of the police department, as well as the P four lot behind the police department. I do have an order in for a drop box, and I was supposed to receive it a few weeks ago. I still have not received it, but we're hoping to receive it this week, and that will be on the north end of the new city hall. I also had some voter questions regarding a drop box inside the new city hall. At the old city hall, we used to have a slot, you know, right outside those front doors. Well, we don't have that at the new city hall, so I ordered another box just to have inside, because some voters, they want to see that ballot go in the building in a box. So we will have one there for them in the next couple of weeks. Also, as you've already heard, I applied for a grant from the Center for Civic, for Protecting Civic Life. It's a nonprofit organization, and I received an email last Thursday that we're being awarded forty-three thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and these monies are to be used for the planning and operation of the November third election. This includes election department costs, voter education, PPE for staff, as well as the election workers, precinct costs, election supplies, and also temporary staffing. And also, I'm going to be sending a postcard to voters this week. It's going to have pretty much everything I've talked about now, including the special hours we're going to have open, all the drop box locations, the website that people can check their ballot status for. And also this afternoon, I had applied for a different reimbursement for our tabulation system. I had purchased a high-speed scanner back in April, and there was a grant that you could apply for that they would reimburse you fifty percent, up to fifty percent of your tabulator, up to a max of thirty thousand dollars. So I received that email today as well, so we're going to be receiving that. And so if you have any questions, please do ask.
Questions from Ms. Howes? Mr. Douglas?
So your core, I'm, I'm sure that signs at city hall say that all visitors have to be masked. Do you, will your literature remind people of that as well, what protocols they need to follow when visiting city hall?
Actually, I already have the postcard printed, and no, that is not on there, but at every door of the new city hall, we have, it, it shows that you have to have protective face masks on, and we will also have disposable masks if someone comes in and they forget their mask, so we will be able to provide them with a mask. So far, just the couple days that we have been open, it has not been an issue, and everyone's had a mask on that has walked in. We also have new self-hand sanitizer stations right at the front door as well when you walk in, and hopefully we'll have those at the rest of the doors as well at city hall.
Very good.
Great job, thanks.
Any other questions? I'll, I'll, I'll field one for you, Ms. Howes. I know we had a conversation a little bit earlier. I mean, with so many people that are new to mail-in voting, and including me, and my wife, it's, I think, the first time we've done a mail-in vote. I think I've done absentee before, but I dropped it off because I was headed on a business trip. And, I mean, with a lot of stuff going on, you know, in, I guess you could just say, you know, mixed messages from various levels of government, as far as, you know, is the post office going to get my ballot, deliver my ballot on time? You know, I think people are, are questioning, you know, and have a little bit of nervousness as far as, is everything going to be working right and appropriately? We know you've taken a lot of the measures, we've talked about them at budget time with some of the equipment, we got the right people lined up. I'm wondering, because we have a lot of folks that are going to come down to city hall, and they're going to talk, and they're going to say, hey, I, I have a question, I, you know, and I know we have, you know, Ms. David's helping out. Would it make sense for the month of October through election day to have maybe pull one of our election workers or somebody retired from the clerk's office to really add a little bit of, I'll say concierge support, but would it be that first interface to help people make, feel comfortable, find out what their issue is, give them that first level direction, like, yep, come on in, and, you know, get in line here, and, you know, that issue will be taken care of, or, oh, you know, you got to go back home and do this and that, or you should be fine, your ballot, you can check online, whatever it may be, to kind of handle that level one interaction, to ensure not only that everything goes smoothly and everyone has, you know, make sure that they can vote if they want to vote, and, and with these new processes to everyone, but also, you know, make them feel comfortable and have confidence that everything's taken care of. Is that something that your office could benefit from?
Definitely. Right now, we, Judy Davids has been out there, last week she was there, but I, you know, we can't have her sitting there all the time, every single day. So I have reached out to a couple of election inspectors that I know of that are retired, as well as some other former employees, and so I'm trying to reach out to get, even if they can just give us a day or two during the week, just to help exactly for what you're saying. Because right now, my staff, I have two staff members every day that are in the commission chambers that are right there, are ready to either register you to vote or issue your ballot. So if that front door person did have any questions or concerns, they can just, you know, let them know if you go in there, they can help you right there. So, but definitely, we have to have someone at the door to direct people, because they aren't, everyone that is coming in right now, they're not allowed to go to the other departments. We have the doors sanctioned off so that, you know, people are not wandering around city hall, and for the other doors that are in city hall, you have to have a badge to be able to scan in to get in through the other doors. So right now, we just have the lobby and the city commission chambers open.
And I bet you that would filter some of the distractions of people coming in for other businesses that aren't aware, and, you know, they can be dressed at the door politely, and we can focus on, you know, at least your office can focus on election-related issues more efficiently. I mean, when I think about it, I'm sure it's not going to break the bank to have this insurance. I don't know, Mr. Bray, what your thoughts are, if we need a budget amendment, or if it's something that we need a resolution here, you're authorized with that discretion, but it'd be interesting to understand that part and see if, you know, what our commissioners think.
So, Mayor, I would certainly support that. That's, it frees up Judy Davids that there's so many communication issues that we're having that's coming up, and she's, she's doing well in both functions, but as we're drawing greater attention, you know, with the, we really need someone that can focus on election type of duties. So I, I would concur with that if it's a resolution that would support or authorize the manager to execute the wishes as you articulated. You're, you're absolutely correct. Did quick math, and for a temporary employee, you know, you're looking at twenty-six hundred three thousand dollars for the month of October, so.
I mean, we could spend more time trying to search down a missing ballot, or, you know, if something like, somebody complains and they're misunderstood, I mean, the amount of time that it, it takes away from, you know, Ms. Howes and her operation, you know, it would pay for itself, in my opinion, at a rate like that. All it takes is one or two things to derail us, and, you know, we're, I mean, it's right around the corner, and it's unprecedented what we're seeing, so. Commissioner Dubak?
Yeah, thank you for the report, Ms. Howes, and thank you, Mayor, for, you know, raising the, the side idea. I think there's no more important investment that we can make right now than ensuring that our residents feel confident in our election, understand what's happening, and our applicant votes cast and counted. So if we can dedicate some small amount of resources to providing a person to ensure anyone that comes to city hall gets the information they need immediately, and they're not discouraged, or make it feel like, you know, we're not doing everything within our power to allow them to take part in the process. I think that's totally worth it. So, Mr. Bray, you had suggested there'd be a motion to that effect?
Yes, that is correct.
I will so move. A motion by Commissioner Dubak, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Prush? Discussion? All right, no discussion. I might even be taking advantage of that service. I, you know, like I said, I've never done this mail-in thing once for the primary, and the second time around, I think I know what I'm doing, but it's always nice to know someone there can walk me through it if I, you know, make a mistake or, you know, need some extra direction. So I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. LaVassar?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Howes. Great update, very, I'm always glad to hear when you're finding available funding to support the excellent operation. You and the team deserve a lot of credit, and we'll be thinking about you, and please don't hesitate to ask if you need something, you know, to, to support you during this unprecedented time. So we, we believe in you, and we know it's a hard job, and we're lucky to have you, so thank you. Okay. One second here. This is what a frozen computer looks like. Can you guys hear me? Okay, good. All right, now everyone's moving. All right, this brings us to the next agenda item, which is the discussion of the process to fill city commission vacancy and initial review of applications received. If everyone remembers from our last meeting, we made the, the resolution to accept applications for the vacancy left by the sad passing of Commissioner Gibbs. And those applications were due on the twenty-first. The thought was we'd have a week to, you know, let people fill out the applications, and then another week to, you know, for the city commission to review and look at, and have an opportunity to study those applications. I have to say, I'm very grateful for forty-one members of our community stepped up and applied. And looking at the applications, all of them were very qualified, and, and some really stood out, and, you know, it gives a lot of hope. I mean, this is a tough thing to do, being on the city board or on the city commission. I mean, you're faced with criticism every day, you have tough issues, a lot of responsibility for your neighbors, and from things like public safety to, you know, preserving home values, to making sure that, you know, the streets are being taken care of, and, and all the other issues that come here, and for people to step up and volunteer, and not just take on that burden, but put themselves out there for, on public display for criticism was very, in my opinion, heartwarming to see. It gives hope that in the future, you know, we'll have a breadth of, of potential city leaders that can continue to move our city forward. Forty-one people, certainly that out of the gate, that leaves a two and a half percent chance if we just pulled a name out of a hat. I think that's what my math shows roughly. So, you know, I know, I think most of us probably expected maybe a few less applicants in this process. I know I've had a chance to look at a number of the, all of the applications, and look at a number of them a second and third time. and look at a number of them a second and third time. I'm not really sure the best step moving forward, so I'm going to suggest something to see, you know, what the appetite of the commission is. You know, that maybe we can go through and get the ball and the conversation started and, you know, kind of list our top three that we kind of came up with and start to see if there's any commonalities or if there are grave differences. And then kind of talk about then, if that means talking about candidates or if that means talking about, you know, next steps to whittle it down. So I'd be interested in understanding, you know, what the commission might want to do. But I think that might be the best way. I mean, there's really no good way to start this. You gotta get the ball rolling somehow. I'd be brave enough to give my, you know, top three picks to start. But, you know, if the commission wants to memorialize that in a motion, if they like the idea, if they have a different suggestion, all ears. Any discussion? Commissioner Prush?
Yeah. I think your suggestion is good. I don't think any one of us expected 41 applications. We're going to have to start the whittling process somehow. And I had thrown out the idea a while ago of picking our top four or five, but perhaps that's too many. Perhaps it's more expedient to start with three, but I think that's the way to start the process. Other than, I can't think of a more organized way to do this process when we have that many applications. That's just my thought.
And I can do four or five as well, whatever. I mean, I just picked three just for thoughts, you know, but five works good for me, too. Four. The, and I agree, I mean, unlike, you know, what an HR department would do at a normal corporation or whatever, you know, you have a clearinghouse of criteria, but everything we do here is management by committee. So, you know, it's going to be, this will be interesting. I guess it's going to go, you know, we'll have some commonality and we can narrow down some candidates or we're not going to have any commonality and we're going to have to talk about, you know, how we move forward with the process, refining it. So does anyone want to make a motion to that extent or do we just kind of want to start? I don't know what people feel comfortable with, how we memorialize the steps here. I'm good either way. I just want to make sure we, you know, follow some sort of order other than chaos. Commissioner Dubac?
The process we're circulating on, you want a motion that we go around the table? Each share our top three or four and see what is commonality, is everything?
Yeah, we each share our top three, four, five, whatever, whatever's the pleasure of the commission. And then afterwards, we open up the discussion about that versus, you know, just starting to talk about candidates right away, just kind of get the names on the table.
Make the motion just to see if everyone agrees with that.
Yeah.
We have moving forward.
Is that your motion or?
So moved.
What's your number?
What's your number?
Three or four. Do we have to have a hard cap? Can we say three or four? Let's say four. I mean, if you only have three, say three. I have four.
Okay, let's do. Three or four. If you don't have four and you have three, you can say three. Oh, that's okay. We got, yeah, motion by Commissioner Dubac. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Prush. Okay, any discussion? All right, I'll call the vote to get this conversation started. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So I'll be brave enough to start and just like everyone, I'm going to qualify that. I really had a hard time, you know, frankly speaking, when I saw the files come over, I'm like, there's a lot in here, you know. Every application I went through, I was like, oh, oh. And I think for me, some of the criteria that I'm looking at, you know, is somebody that has, you know, certain experience, that has, you know, a solid vision for the community and can hit the ground running, which is, you know, sort of a subjective thing, I guess, in a lot of cases. But the names that stuck out to me, I had Eric McLeod, Dave London, Brandon Colo and Melinda Lofton. Those are the four that stuck out to me. And they all are a little different in what they bring to the table, that they bring something different than what we have, so. Maybe we'll go with Shar next, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Douglas?
I like, actually cannot believe that those are your four top picks. Because those are exactly my four top picks. I swear to God.
You know, maybe Commissioner Douglas, you need to, are you getting enough sleep? Is there something now I?
There is no violation of the Open Meetings Act happening here. This is a stunning coincidence because my four top candidates are Eric McLeod, David London, Brandon Colo and Melinda Lofton.
Are you sure you were prepared and you're not just copying off the student next to you, Commissioner Douglas?
Honest to be.
Okay. Commissioner LaVassar?
This is a challenge getting it down to four. I actually had seven on my list coming into the meeting tonight. And I can get that down to perhaps five, but I'm not sure how easy it is for me to get down to four. What I look for, I mean, everyone brings something unique to the table. But what I look for primarily is, is number one, there's got to be a passion for our city. That's the most important thing. Number two, I like a diversity of ideas. One thing that Kim stood out for as Commissioner is she had a perspective and that was a refreshing perspective. And that was perhaps different than the majority on this commission. And that was an important attribute to have for that seat. She brought in a thought process, she brought in ideas that maybe were a little bit against the grain, but she represented a significant portion of the city population. And those voices are important. It's important that they're heard. So having a different perspective, bringing something unique to the table, bringing another viewpoint to the table, I believe is extremely important. The names that I have on my list, they include Tom Halleck, Rick Karlowsky, Pam Lindell, Theodore Page and Erica Sykes.
Thank you, Commissioner LaVassar. Let's see, I see Kyle next.
Okay. So like everybody else, I was really pleased with the pool of candidates. There's a lot of folks who I would love to see applications for boards or committees from, you know, who haven't really engaged with the city yet, but clearly have a passion and some really unique expertise. That would be awesome on any of our boards or committees. And it's great, folks, you know, came out for this, but, you know, we definitely have need for those kind of folks on boards and committees to start learning the city, you know, kind of before being at this table. And some people said as much that, you know, they had a unique expertise, they knew they could lend, but actually don't even really have a good view to how the city operates. And I'm like, I like that you're in this conversation. But we definitely, we won't, we're filling the seat for a year. Whoever's in the seat for a year, if they so choose, it'd have to be held accountable by the voters in a year or so. You know, I was looking for someone who, yeah, had vision and passion for the city. You know, who really demonstrated some understanding and had some experience, you know, working on boards and committees. Those high ranking for me, you know, already dedicating your time to the city and just understanding, you know, how government works and specifically how the city operates. And, you know, not political talking points, but, you know, real thoughtful consideration of where we're at and why. And, you know, they have an earnest perspective on future challenges and a vision for the future and steps how to get there. And so like one thing that really jumped out at me, did people focus on like issue and solution or complaints? And that to me is, shows how someone's going to approach their service. Then I had any unique skills. And there are some folks who had really, really, really cool background that I would love to see, you know, if not at the table involved. So I had some similarities with, with, with Mayor Fornia and Commissioner Prush. But where I landed was, let's see my list here. David London, Monica Hunt, Ron George and Brandon Colo.
That was Monica Hunt?
Yes.
Ron George, David London and Brandon Colo. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Dubac. And Pat Prush, or Commissioner Prush?
Um, I also was just so impressed with the quality of the applicants that we got and such a variety of occupations and experience levels and ages. We had a geologist, we had a couple of nurses, we had some attorneys, we had business people, people who worked in the large companies and people who owned their own small businesses. And some retired people and some people who are quite young and have only lived in the city for a short period of time. But they all have a passion for the community. And you would think that in a general application process, you would get maybe a dozen people who are regulars. We all recognize their names, they're common, we've heard about them, they're active in the community one way or another. But we received perhaps maybe eight or nine of the people that applied and these people that I was familiar with. And the other three quarters of them are people that I don't know at all and yet demonstrated a very strong passion for the community and wanted to do what is best for the community. And in terms of those open-ended questions that Commissioner Douglas wisely added in the application, it gave them an opportunity to really explain how they felt about various issues. You know, what are the three biggest issues or where do you see the city going in the future and so on and so forth? And they wrote paragraphs in additional pages explaining what their thoughts were. They didn't just give us one or two-word answers to those questions. And most of them were willing to do that. And I think that that demonstrated a great deal of thoughtfulness and care about the way they filled out the application and demonstrated a great deal of thoughtfulness and care about the community. So I was very, very impressed and very humbled by that. I just think that it's a great community full of great people and this is an example of it. In terms of the people that I came down to, and it was hard, it was very, very, very hard for me to narrow it down. And I, following your all-pattern, I'm just narrowing it down to four. I had on my list, not an alphabetical order, Brandon Colo, Melinda Lofton, Dave London and Ronald George. I think all of them have demonstrated strong commitments to the community. All of them have demonstrated a number of commitments of public service outside of their regular job responsibilities, which I think is important. They've gone above and beyond what just the general job qualifications are and have demonstrated a very strong commitment to making their community and their country stronger and a better place for all of us to live. So those are the four that I would suggest.
Thank you, Commissioner Prush. I think I have Commissioner Macy left, right?
Right. Last but not least, right? That's what we're supposed to say.
Definitely not least. I would never say that.
So, I mean, I'm going to say the same thing that everyone else said, that I didn't expect that there would be 41 candidates that I would have to spend time considering. It was very impressive to see this level of engagement in our community. People who really want to improve our city, have a passion for it and took the time to do this and put themselves out there. Like when these applications went public, you know, I felt for these people. Suddenly their lives are on display and their hopes and dreams and welcome to politics. So I'm really impressed with the group that we, that we had. A lot of people who I didn't know were interested in this job. And I'm happy to see their names put out there. I think, I think I'm going to have a lot of competition next year and I think that's a good thing for our community. So some, I will admit that for me, when I'm looking through these, I really felt the weight of the responsibility of appointing someone to this kind of position. You know, we had to hire Mr. Brake, but, you know, if he turned out to be crazy, we could fire him. But when we appoint someone to the commission, it's very difficult. It's very challenging to remove them. And I worried a lot about that when I'm reading some of these applications, some of which, I mean, many of them sounded really great. And, you know, I could tell that they were, most people were, everyone was being honest and saying things that maybe they wouldn't have said if they felt like they could be, they could try to trick us. But nonetheless, not knowing some of the applicants and not knowing some of the references, it did give me pause. Some of the ones that I thought looked very strong, I hope to get to know better in the future, but it felt, it was, it gave me a lot of anxiety to think about giving this position to someone who if not, if not, don't know. Even if we were to go through an interview process again, it seemed like it would be a challenge. So the ones that stood out to me, the top four, were Kurt Von Eberstein, Lisa Smith, David London and Brandon Colo. I was glad to see some other names on the list of people who have been long doing service for the community. But I'm looking through this now and to me, I'm seeing some similarities here. So I'm going to move the discussion forward because it seems like all but one have picked on their top four my first choice, which would be Brandon Colo. So I would move that the commission appoint Brandon Colo to this position as a way to get discussion started.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Macy and I see a second by Commissioner Douglas. Okay, it's a very quick way to get a discussion going, Commissioner Macy. Okay, Commissioner Prush?
Not a discussion necessarily right now, but Commissioner Macy, I'm sorry, who was your fourth on your list? I have Venerstein, Smith, Colo and.
London. David London.
Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Macy?
Okay, so I think you said it, Mayor. I feel like what's really important is to have someone who has a passion and vision for the city and is ready to get going right now. This is just a one-year spot. Whoever is appointed is going to have to run again next year if they want to continue. And so I think we need someone who knows what's happening in the city and has ideas, innovative ideas and how we can improve. And even looking through the applications, the one that most clearly demonstrated this to me was Brandon Colo's. His application was a little bit over the top, but that's because he spends whole of his time thinking about these issues. Brandon is a friend of mine, I will freely admit it, but I don't, didn't meet him in grade school or watching our kids in the playground. I met him around the city doing community engagement-type activities. We were appointed to the library board at the same time and once I met him, I saw him everywhere. He was at the same interviews I was at for the new school district superintendent. He was always at the farmer's market. He was at the Normandy Oaks Public Engagement. And then he was either attending or watching all the city commission meetings. I'd run into him and we would be talking about these issues all the time and he still is. And when I run into him now, he will frequently argue with me about some point at a recent commission meeting. He ran, we both ran together in, for City Commission in 2017. He came up fewer than 50 votes short when he ran head-to-head against Commissioner LaVassar. That election, like many elections recently, got a little heated. But Commissioner LaVassar and Brandon Colo did not. They ran a very civil race against each other. And I believe that to this day, their relationship is a friendly one, despite being on opposite ends of the political spectrum. And that's something to be said. And losing that race didn't stop him from being involved. He didn't give up at that point. He's only continued to get more involved, the community and the city. And I think he, as we can see from his application and anyone who knows him can say, he has a lot of ideas. I don't always agree with them. I think I can get anyone on the library board to back me up that we spent a lot of time fighting. But he's nonetheless, he's bringing forward what he thinks are the best ideas for our community and he is deeply versed in what is going on in rural Oak, the minutia. He watches these meetings, he attends them and he thinks about them and solutions for the problems that are facing us right now. And I think that's why, I think he would be the best one to move forward in this position now.
Okay. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In looking at the applications, I certainly considered whether applicants had experience in local government because with just a year in the term, I think that, that ability is important. And I looked at their job backgrounds and their civic involvement in other areas. But my top priority was really how people answered the two questions that I had proposed. One was, what do you think are the city's three biggest challenges? And one was, what are your priorities or what do you think is important for the people of our city going forward? And it wasn't so much looking for, you know, And it wasn't so much looking for, you know, specific answers as I was looking for people who explained why they chose that answer. I wanted to see an understanding of what a city can do and also awareness of what some of the global issues are that are facing municipalities across Michigan, across the country. I will say this, I was very gratified by the number of people whose priorities included attainable housing, sustainability, and infrastructure. Those are all priorities of the city commission. Sustainability is one of our eight goals. So I, you know, I'm happy to see that people are addressing those issues. But I will say that if anybody, I mean, citizens should sit down and go through these forty-one applications because they will see that no other applicant came close to the thoughtfulness that Mr. Colo did. He gave well-researched, detailed reasons for his choices. He based some of his ideas on data. He referred to the semi-annual quantitative opinion study that the Cobalt Company performs for us, so he's alert to what the statistically valid opinions are of our residents. He acknowledged the challenge of presenting, preventing sewer backups when Royal Oak is downstream from eleven other communities who are discharges, and he acknowledges the need for a regional solution that's also part of the city's strategic plan. His application was, yes, as Commissioner Macy says, maybe a little over the top, but he's the only person who cared that much about it and had thought that much about it to say that much, and I think he's an outstanding candidate.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. Anybody else? Commissioner Lavassar.
I will agree with Commissioner Macy. Mr. Colo and I, despite being opposing candidates three years ago, we did have a civil campaign, and I certainly respect Mr. Colo's passion for the city, and I respect his friendly demeanor, and we've gotten along just fine in the time during that campaign and the time since. He meets my criteria as far as having passion for the city. He does not meet my criteria as bringing a very distinct, diverse viewpoint to this commission, which Commissioner Gibbs did bring. And my concern here is that there's a lot of people, as we well know, who feel somewhat disenfranchised by the city, they do not feel that their voices are heard at the commission table. And we need to bring, you know, diverse viewpoints to the table, which is, which I just don't believe that Mr. Colo is gonna do that to the degree that we need. My top candidate is Pamela Lindell. She's demonstrated herself as being a very committed volunteer for the city in a number of different ways. She's shown significant passion. She has put herself out as a candidate coming extremely close less than twelve months ago. But, you know, you change a few votes here at that election last year, and it'd be her here giving her opinion and not me at that time. She's a very strong person. She has very significant convictions to her opinions, to her thoughts. She would advocate very strongly for members of the community, and it's not, nothing that she came extremely close to being elected to this board less than a year ago. She would be my choice, and she's, you know, she's the one that I believe we need to join us and to fill the role that Commissioner Gibbs was serving prior to that.
And Commissioner Lavassar? Anybody else? Commissioner Dubach?
I feel compelled to correct a misstatement, a public comment about something I had said last week, which was, you know, this is the fourth seat that we've filled, Mayor, since you and I have been at the table. And in the previous three incidents, we did not pick from the losing candidate pool, that's actually never even been a consideration. We always picked from the pool of previously elected people in our city saying, these are people we know, they're easy to pick because they have, they've had the faith of the voters multiple times, like Commissioner Purush, when we pushed Barbara back to the table, having had served as mayor and on the commission for many years. And what I said is, I appreciate this process because it's an opportunity to bring some new voices to the table, to let some people express their vision, and then we can, you know, just as voters would. I have one vote here, I'm looking at this awesome pool of candidates, and I'm trying to judge it based on who I would vote for. Like, Commissioner Douglas, Commissioner Macy, you did it pretty well that Mr. Colo's application was exemplary in identifying his vision for the city. I mean, especially in contrast to some other applications that were really just a list of grievances and not really saying, here's what we need to do, here's how I'm gonna bring, you know, this idea and make the city better for everybody. I would be happy with any of the four on my list and probably any of the next four down, but we do have to split hairs, and I think the application is probably an appropriate place to look. I do want to give a shit-out shout-out to Mr. George, who, you know, served admirably on our charter review committee for many years. Most of us have served one time or another, he's an expert in our charter, super, super thoughtful man, who, I think, like the others that are listed here would be great. And Mr. London has been leading our Veteran Affairs Committee, Veteran Events Committee, he is a veteran himself, he's passionate about the city and has, you know, you can see from his application, a lot of great ideas and vision, and I'm glad to have both of them continuing to serve with the city. They rose to that level because of their service, and I just wanted to respect them. But as much as Commissioner Lavassar might think, it's all agreement. Mr. Colo often gets up in my business through emails and whenever I see him around town about a decision I've made or a vote I've taken or something that he has an issue with. And so that does not sound like a lot of fun, but he has proven both through his involvement in his neighborhood association where he's been a leader, and a leader not in any way showing commission vision or commission line, but fighting for his neighborhood and the people around him and what's best for them, regardless of what any of us at the table think. And then the service on the library board, which he is a contributing factor, but they're doing awesome things at our library. And, and he's a great champion for that, and he's served admirably. And to the extent that folks, you know, think that election results should play a factor in this, you know, Commissioner, or Mr. Colo lost to Commissioner Lavassar by twenty-three votes. So I mean, that's, if that's something people are pointing to, there's that too. So considering all the criteria I put forward, I, I can, I can support this motion with the understanding that Mr. Colo, should he be appointed, will cause me many headaches.
Well, I guess we're talking about Mr. Colo with this motion. I mean, I will say that, you know, the four that I picked and that Commissioner Douglas copied off of, you know, would definitely, I think they fit all of my criteria, and I would even argue too, I think Commissioner Dubach said, the next four as well. You know, and I think here in some of the discussion here, I get the point with Mr. Colo, the edge to the application. I will say it's indisputable that, you know, his application, it's not saying the other applications weren't thoughtful and important and, you know, people didn't work hard on them, but, you know, his definitely lends itself as standing out to some extent. He also does have the experience, I'll give Commissioner Macy, he's been on the library board, and, you know, he understands how the, I served on the library board, I had the privilege of serving on the library board, both as a citizen volunteer as well as a city commissioner. And, you know, the budget's very similar of how it's run, the strategic planning, you know, you're responsible for payroll, you have to get state funding, you have to be creative, you have to do amendments, you really have to plan and forecast, and all of our committees are important, but, you know, that one I think to some extent does mock what we do at the city level. You know, and I, and I think some of the other candidates I had on my list bring some special things to the table that I think elevate them too, above Mr. Colo in a lot of, a lot of instances. I will agree with Commissioner Dubach. You know, Mr. Colo and I, I think it's pretty clear, we don't always agree on every issue. And I will give him credit because I think that, you know, referencing some of the issues that had gone on in his neighborhood from the burms to a recent development, you know, people get passionate and rightfully so. And, you know, I will say he's demonstrated the ability. I mean, typically you have two choices, you can divide or you can engage in dialogue. And I think Mr. Colo has proven, at least in his neighborhood, that, you know, instead of going and, you know, having a list of demands and complaints, that he was able to bring his neighborhood together, bring myself, and in the most recent case, the developer together, and we actually had a really good discussion and dialogue that went way longer than anyone expected, and we were able to translate, you know, solve some of the remedies, get the developer to agree to some things that would make the neighbors happy. And also, you know, think of some really creative ideas, like, for example, instead of just having another berm, we've kind of converted that into a really cool pocket park in that neighborhood. So that, you know, breakup will always be there permanently, but instead of just being a hill with trees on it, we thought creatively, we thought that was a great gateway between the new neighbors and the existing neighbors and how folks could come together in, you know, the ever-changing landscape of Royal Oak. And that wouldn't have happened, frankly speaking. And I'll say it, without Mr. Colo challenging me personally in a very constructive way, which is sometimes hard to do, and, you know, persuading me with the help of his neighbors to look at that project differently, to look at the berm situation down in the south part of town differently, and, you know, he deserves to get credit where credit's deserved. And I think for me, that sort of approach, whether you agree with them or not, I think his methods are at least been successful in our community. And so, you know, I, I, I'm listening to the dialogue here, and I'm not sure that my opinion is even relevant or matters anyways, based on, you know, some of the support I've seen, but, you know, if it's the pleasure of this commission, you know, I can certainly support Mr. Colo. I will say though, you know, I mean, I will, if we did a random selection here with any one of his picks up here, I'd be okay with that too. But, you know, I understand where my colleagues are coming from with the edge, and I do think Mr. Colo could hit the ground running. And I think for me, the thing that sticks out at least about, not just his application, but about my experience with him, so although we don't agree, he's entered into productive dialogue and he's changed my mind a couple times, which I think is, you know, an important asset that he could bring to the table. So that's kind of my thought on the situation. Commissioner Purush.
I'm not gonna repeat a lot of the things that the other commissioners have said about Mr. Colo and his qualifications. I will agree that he has gone above and beyond, especially in the neighborhood situation, of being able to craft solutions to what sometimes can be intractable issues between the developer and the neighborhood association. He works very effectively with that, and I think that's a good skill to have as a commissioner, and I think that will be something that we will benefit from going forward. I just want to speak briefly to the issue of, you should go to the person who's next in line, which has been a recurrent theme from a number of the comments that we've received. Certainly in the last election, Mrs. Lindell was the next highest vote getter. She came in fourth out of six, so if a third person or one of the three had dropped out, she certainly would have been elected. However, but I think we really need to look to the election where Commissioner Gibbs was elected, which was in 2017. The next person behind was someone who also filled out an application, and that's Mr. Karloski, Mr. Karloski. I think that's the election that we should look to if we're gonna use next in line as a criteria. I don't personally think that's an appropriate criteria, and certainly the charter doesn't give us any guidelines, they don't tell us how we're supposed to do this. But if we're gonna look to that criteria as to who's next in line, we should look to the election where Commissioner Gibbs was last elected, and that was in 2017. And if she had not been elected, or one of the other people in that election group had not been elected, Mr. Karloski would have been elected. And I think that's the election that we need to look to in terms of this whole next-in-line concept, because that's the election where Commissioner Gibbs was elected, 2017. So if they'd come down to that, I think that would be the appropriate person to put in and not Mrs. Lindell. But otherwise, I support the recommendation and the motion to appoint Brandon Colo to this position.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, just briefly, Mayor, once this vote is concluded, would you give me a minute to talk a little bit to the people who are listening about the appointments process for the coming year and for 2021?
Absolutely, for our boards and committees?
Yes.
Okay, very good. And I'll just add, I know, Commissioner Lavassar, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to do some follow-up with regard to what Commissioner Purush said. I certainly had the same thought process and consideration as Commissioner Purush that Mr. Karloski being next in line in that particular election, just after Commissioner Gibbs, he certainly would have a, a very good basis for saying that he should be the one chosen to replace Commissioner Gibbs. I see a lot of different criteria. I do know that some communities, they do definitely look next in line when a commissioner leaves. I believe Royal Oak actually did that at one point as well. I believe that Commissioner Prentice at one point was the next in line, was elevated when an opening came up. So it's a, it's a consideration and it's an important one because it shows first that you have people who have put themselves out to the public, and it's not easy running for, for the commission, you know, the petition process, the campaign, the knock on the doors, the meeting people. It shows an incredible, it takes an incredible amount of effort to run, it takes an incredible amount of passion to do so. And while that by itself is not the sole criteria, it's an incredibly important one. And given that the people have spoken less than a year ago, and they showed extreme support for Pamela Lindell, I thought that she was the appropriate one, more so than Rick Karloski, simply because of the, the fact that that election was closer in time than the election three years ago where Mr. Karloski won, when he ran, I should say. But, but again, it comes back to, you want to make sure that all the voices in our city are heard, and, you know, my experience with Ms. Lindell is that she is more than willing to speak up, you know, share her perspectives and advocate for folks who may not otherwise feel they have a voice. And I think that's incredibly important, and I do believe that if we go a different direction here, there's gonna be a lot of people in town who are gonna feel even more disenfranchised, which is a shame.
Commissioner Purush.
I just think it's important to remind people that Pamela Lindell is on the ballot for county commission this fall and November as a Republican candidate for county commission for one of the districts in Royal Oak. So she's effectively applying both for a county commission seat at the same time that she's applying for a city commission seat. There is no legal prohibition of her doing that, certainly, but it brings to question exactly where her strong feelings are. Is she really committed to county government or is she really committed to city government? It's a, to me, it's a little bit confusing. And if by any chance, if she were appointed to the city commission and won, she would win the county commission seat, we would be doing this whole process all over again in a couple of months. So it just doesn't seem, just doesn't seem logical or appropriate from a procedural standpoint to proceed with a person that has that other, that other activity going on at the same time. To me, it just seems, it just seems that it creates a confusing situation, which is inappropriate for this particular situation.
And I'll just add, I appreciate the sentiments that have been discussed related to past election results and all of that, and I think we should definitely look to past elections as, you know, cues or a, you know, input into our thinking. We also have to look that each of us was, has been elected up here by the voters, right? And we've been charged with making important decisions, and I'll argue far more important than this decision. We've made decis- We've made decisions that directly impact the public health and safety of our neighbors and community members when it comes to decisions about police and fire. You know, we, we make decisions that, you know, directly impact the value of people's most important asset, their home. We make decisions about policies that, you know, bring people into the community and make them feel engaged and part of the community, um, and, and motivate a sense of community. We, we make these decisions all the time that are really, really important. And this is just one of them that the voters put us in charge with. The charter is, I think, on purpose, relatively, um, limited in its discretion. I don't think that the charter envisioned having people up here that just push buttons with a formula to decide, you know, key decisions. We're elected to use our brains to, you know, deal with the ever-changing tides of, uh, the world around us. And, you know, to make decisions, not just for the present, but for the future as well. And, um, I think in this particular case, in its wisdom, the charter has left it to us, the ones that were elected undisputably, um, from our previous elections. We all come from a different election cycle. And I think that is, you know, our mission here, based on the charter, is to not go to a formula, but to use the discretion that the charter has told us we have to use in selecting a candidate to fill a vacancy. You know, I think that, um, you know, there, there's a mathematical hazard in just simply looking at past elections. I mean, one, at the char, you know, let's just say that was the approach and somebody, the, the winner got 5,000 and then the next vote getter was a writing candidate with three votes. You know, what would that tell us? That would tell us, I don't know, that candidate has a lot of support or not. Uh, and so the numbers have become really murky and, you know, one could argue 1,800 is enough and 5,700 is enough, or 2,000 is too little. I mean, I think that you really have to take a lot of latitude with the numbers that have a very strict interpretation, uh, or not a very, or a very broad interpretation. And, and I think that's exactly why the charter calls out the provision for us to use our common sense and, you know, our collective, uh, wisdom and criteria to select for these vacancies. Because I don't, I don't think you can, if you put all of your weight and decision on a past election, there's way too many hazards there, both in terms of mathematics and, and overthinking voter interpretation, especially when you have multiple votes, uh, going on for various candidates. So. Uh, but I do agree, we should look at the cues and, and like some of the candidates that Commissioner Levaser brought up, you know, they didn't run. And I appreciate that and I applaud that. And I think to me, that's important to put your name out there, to be criticized during the election cycle and to have people vote for you, as did Mr. Colo. He needs that criteria. And so, um, you know, I think, I think those kind of give the edge maybe to Mr. Colo, uh, for the things we mentioned. And, uh, you know, I think you guys have done, I think Commissioner Macy out of the gate, a little surprise there, but, you know, you, you made a good sales pitch and, um, you know, happy to, to hear, uh, the viewpoints of my, my colleagues here. So, I don't know, I, I, how, how, how does everyone, I'll say, we'll continue the discussion here. How's everyone feeling right now? I mean, I, I guess some, I wasn't necessarily prepared for a immediate, you know, motion, but I mean, what's the, any other discussion? Any other sentiments or feelings? Commissioner Macy.
I want to follow up with you were saying about, um, the discretion that we have, Mayor. And, um, I want to repeat whoever, Kimber, who said this, uh, encourage our residents to read through these applications. So, I mean, I mean, I looked pretty closely at the questions that we added to the application. And for Ms. Lindell's application for the three greatest challenges, she said, first, our mounting debt, we have to maintain the quality of living our residents expect without taxing the amount of Royal Oak, reduce the debt. Second, our bond rating, we have to raise it back to the triple, to the prior trip, A, triple A plus rating to be able to secure a better loan bond rate, should we need one. And third, the loss of downtown merchants, empty storefronts do not generate income for the city. Our parking structures need to be paid for. So I think this goes back to what Commissioner Dubach was saying, is that this, these, these are three issues with no solutions or really even hints. And the first two seem to be contradictory even, that we have mounting debt that she's concerned about, and yet she wants to improve our bond rating in case we need to take out further debt. So it just indicated to me a real lack of understanding of what's happening in the city. I mean, we had 41 applications here, and when you're looking at them closely, we're charged with making this decision that's right for the residents. And we have to look beyond the one single data point of the past election results. Uh, where I thought Commissioner Perush was going with the, um, 2017 results is that actually, Mr. Colo got more votes, I believe, than Mr. Karlowsky. They were just running in separate pieces. But in terms of resident support, I believe Mr. Colo for that election was the next in line.
Thank you, Commissioner Macy. And I can't, I can't help myself. I'll just want, want to make sure that our, um, bond rating, um, although the county has a triple A, you know, our bond rating is, is one of the highest in Michigan among all cities and, um, school districts for, for municipality slash, you know, other, uh, government agencies. So, you know, we want to preserve it. And I agree, but it is, it is in good shape. And I, and I would argue that our parking garages, we did something very clever where we made those revenue bonds. And, um, you know, those are actually, um, covered by the parking system with no risk to Royal Oak taxpayers, which is a very clever approach we took. But I just want to make sure those issues are important and, and, um, you know, I, just for the sake of anyone watching, uh, you know, just a little bit more information on those topics. Sorry. Any other discussion? Commissioner Perush.
Hopefully you don't all yell at me, but I'm going to call the question because I think we've talked this one to death. And I think we're ready to vote. And there is a motion on the table.
Commissioner Perush calls the question, so I'm going to call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Commissioner Levaser.
No.
Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach.
Yes.
Commissioner Perush.
Yes.
I guess I vote yes as well. So, um, uh, as promised, Commissioner Douglas, um, I'm going to yield the floor to you for minutes to talk about, um, committees and appointments.
Others here have spoken about the really astonishing quality of the 41 applicants that we saw today. And the city, I think, as the mayor pointed out, has a number of boards and committees and commissions and task forces to which the city commission appoints members. And there's always a great deal of turnover around the, at the end of the year as people's terms expire. And I seriously encourage all of the applicants today to go to the city's website, look at its committees, boards and, and task forces page, find something that you're interested in and fill out a new application form for one of those boards or committees. Because it's a great way to learn about the city. If you're interested in being a city commissioner, you'll get your feet in wet, uh, during the process and kind of learn how things go. And, I mean, so many of those people are so qualified and smart that I can't wait to have their voices shaping the work that the city does. So, so y'all come.
And I'll just add, I got a couple of appointments I have to make coming up here. So please get your, you know, take that application and convert it over to, uh, some of the boards and committees you want to serve on. Great point, Commissioner Douglas. Commissioner Perush.
And also, this is just a personal perspective, but for my time when I had served on the appointments committee, it impresses me when people have put more thought into the specific boards and committees that they are interested in and have narrowed the list down to just one or two, or maybe even three or four or five of their top committees that they would really be interested in, as opposed to give us a whole laundry list of, of 15 committees saying essentially, just point me to something. I, I want to see someone who has a passion for a particular subject area. Um, and so from my point of view, um, when you're filling out your application, take the time to read about what the various committees and boards do and identify a half dozen, however many you're comfortable with, that you really think you would have something genuinely to contribute to or that you are genuinely interested in. And don't give us a laundry list of, of 15 committees essentially saying, just appoint me to anything. That's with, with me, that's not going to get you very far. But that's, uh, that's a personal viewpoint, but, um, I'm looking for people who have passion for particular topics.
Thank you, Commissioner Perush. And, and I'll one thing, um, we should probably congratulate, um, thank everyone for applying and congratulate Mr. Colo. I presume Mr. Brake, Mr. Gillum, or myself will have to figure out the next steps as far as, uh, reaching out, any, you know, loose ends that may, uh, need to be tied up and swearing in and all that stuff, um, you know, moving forward. I don't, I don't know who takes the lead on that. Especially when we're doing everything in a digital format today. So I'll leave that to you guys to let us know what the next steps are. We don't have to talk about it today. All right. Okay. That brings us to the last two items on our agenda tonight that were added. We had requests to, um, add authorization for council to proceed with a complaint, uh, that we discussed in closed session. Mr. Gillum, that'll be our first one, and then we'll get to our last one.
Mayor and Commissioners, this concerns, uh, an administrative matter that's pending in front of the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. It's a case number CV 505175. We had a chance to talk about our options in closed session this evening. And I would just ask that the commission adopt a resolution authorizing council to proceed as discussed in closed session tonight.
Mr. Douglas.
So move.
Seconded by Commissioner Perush. Discussion. All right. With none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach.
Yes.
Commissioner Perush.
Yes.
Commissioner Levaser.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillum. This brings us to our last item on the agenda tonight, which was, um, requested by Commissioner Macy, charitable designation for the vote challenge. Commissioner Macy.
Yes, we received some emails. I called him Mr. Pernick at the beginning, but it's actually Dr. Pernick. He's just an individual who lives in Bingham Farms, and he says here, um, he's sponsoring con, voting contests based on his research on complexity theory and cancer. And he believes getting residents more involved with the community will create more vibrant and dynamic communities, which benefits us all, as well as promoting our civic obligations. So in 2018, he did this vote challenge for the cities in our area, um, where the, the ones with the highest turnout, um, get cash prizes towards a charity of their choice. So it's 1,525, um, for the ones that have the highest voter turnout based on results reported. And also any city that has at least 75% turnout will get 250, and any city with 80% turnout will get 500. But you only can get one total. So anyway, he's very generously doing this out of his own funds, just as a means to promote civic engagement. Um, and he has asked us to choose to designate a charity that our funds will go to if we end up winning. And that's part of the means of promoting. Um, so I'm going to suggest Royal Oak Youth Assistance. That's, I'm going to move that, that we designate that charity, although open to suggestions, but that's what I, that's what I picked.
We have motion by Commissioner Macy, a second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. Commissioner Levaser.
I'm sorry. Once again, what was that charity?
Royal Oak Youth Assistance.
I think that's a, a, a good charity. I could certainly support that. Another one that comes to mind is, um, uh, is, uh, the Royal Oak Animal Shelter, that I think would be a worthy one. Uh, Mr. Pernick, I, he probably doesn't remember, but we worked briefly together back in the mid 1980s. In addition to being a doctor, he's also got a law license, that sort of thing.
Wow. Lots of impressive people we're finding out about tonight. Commissioner Macy.
So we could split it like that. I think someone else, another city does that. I don't think there's. Anyway, I'm open to suggestions. I think.
If, you know, he, he does Royal Oak Youth Assistance, we could match, uh, from the city to the Royal Oak Animal Shelter, but.
Oh, I like that idea. Can we do that?
Kind of defeats the, I mean, we, we're going to fund the animal shelter regardless, so, you know, that's, uh,
Should do it the other way then. Maybe we should have him designate the animal shelter and we should match the youth assistance.
There you go. Someone offered that up as an amendment. We could, we could manage that. Mr. Macy.
I'll friendliness amend my own motion.
Second on the amendment. I was going to say, Commissioner Levaser, if you didn't raise your hand, I'm going to be like, you know, figuring out what's going on. Okay, good. So Commissioner Levaser seconds it. All right, we'll vote on the amendment. Uh, Commissioner Levaser.
Yes.
What are we doing here? I'm not following this.
The amendment is to have a city, this, the, 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 the doctor will contribute to the Royal Oak Animal Shelter and the city will match whatever we get to Royal Oak Youth Assistance.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach.
Yes.
Commissioner Perush.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, the original motion now. Wait a minute. How are we going to write this? Because the amendment kind of flopped everything. Mr. Gillum, can you help me? It's late. I'm seeing a hyperbole or some word I don't understand affecting the situation right now.
No, to be honest with you, I'm a little bit confused too, so.
So we just voted on the amendment that it would be, go to the Royal Oak Animal Shelter. Now the original motion.
It's just that we do it at all, right?
Yeah, do we need to do, well, we have to clear it.
I, I think the motion on the table right now is that, uh, we donate to the, uh, or that we ask that Ms., uh, Dr. Pernick donate to the Royal Oak Animal Shelter, that we will match what he donates to, uh, Royal Oak Youth.
Yeah, that's what the amendment did. You're right, Commissioner Levaser. The, the amendment fixed the original motion to reconstruct the motion into something that's not as, um, constructive. Got it. And, and City Clerk Halas agrees. Thank you, Commissioner Levaser. Um, all right, we'll call for the vote. Uh, Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Commissioner Levaser.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach.
Yes.
Commissioner Perush.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. Mental gymnastics is the last agenda item caused by me. My apologies. All right, um, I guess notwithstanding anything else for the benefit of our beloved, wonderful and vibrant community, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Perush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Perush.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
Commissioner Levaser.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in. Thank you, staff, for all your good work in preparation for tonight's meeting, and, uh, we'll see you again next time. Take care.